It is a Camarillo Landscape Maintenance District Zones 1.
Do we have any public comments?
I'm sorry. I forgot public comments, you're right, thank you. Do we have any? I don't have any cards, it appears to me, the city clerk doesn't have any cards. Is there anyone who would like to speak to us on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we will now move on to the one public hearing that's on the agenda tonight. Camarillo Landscape Maintenance District Zones 1 through 10, resolution ordering levy and collection of assessments. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you Mayor Craven. Public Works Administrator Lindy Moore will present this item.
Good evening Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you tonight is an item that we review annually in order to continue levying assessments for the nine zones that make up our Landscape Maintenance District. Each year we need to hold a public hearing to consider whether or not to continue these assessments as proposed in the engineer's report that you have in your packet. The engineer's report that was prepared identifies what is needed to continue the landscape maintenance in the specified areas, and that is the final report you're looking at tonight. I don't plan on going through a whole lot of detail, we go through this every year, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. But I would like to draw your attention to the table on page 16 of the report, which summarizes the nine zones. It also includes the current and the proposed assessments that you would approve tonight in the resolution. You can see that there are no recommended increases in any of the nine zones this year. If you wish to continue levying these assessments for the following year, for next tax year, there is a resolution that would call for the county to levy these assessments on the tax roll, and staff is recommending that you move to approve the attached resolution so we can report to the county assessor's office.
Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Kildie.
Maybe you could shed a little bit of light on why there's not any increases this year?
In most of the districts, in the zones, we have some pretty significant fund balances, so we are utilizing those to take care of any of the costs of increased maintenance expenses. We review this on an annual basis, and with your reserve policy that you'll be discussing later this evening, I believe, these balances will also be going, the reserve requirement will be reduced even further.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards, I don't believe the city clerk has any cards. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to us on this item? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of the council.
Your Honor, adopt a resolution ordering the levy and the collection of the assessments for Camarillo Landscape Maintenance Zones District 1 through 10, as shown in the engineer's report.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, with that, we're going to go back to city attorney, item 8A, KidStream, proposed term sheet and rental agreement for former library property.
Yes, thank you Mayor. This item involves the former library property, it's located at 3100 Ponderosa Drive. The organization known as KidStream, which is a nonprofit organization, is considering purchasing that former library to operate a children's museum. There will be two items for your review and consideration this evening. One of them is a proposed term sheet, and the other is a proposed rental agreement. The city has been in negotiations with KidStream for the last several months, and probably moving into over a year now, and the results of those negotiations are that we've reached some terms that are in the term sheet, the primary of which would probably include the proposed purchase price of $900,000. There's also a schedule that's in your packet at big page 10, it is marked as Exhibit B to the term sheet. What you're looking at now is actually Exhibit A to the term sheet, and that's for illustration purposes. I'm sure you all are familiar with the location of the former library and its surrounding properties owned by the Boys and Girls Club to the west, as well as Pleasant Valley Recreation and Parks District with their skate park, racquetball courts, and horseshoe pits. We are referencing the schedule that I just mentioned, that's Exhibit B, big page 10 of your packet. Some of the highlights of that schedule include the proposed fundraising that is intended by KidStream, and then a close of escrow in January 27th of 2020, again, these are projected dates, those dates may come sooner or later than what is projected, certificate of occupancy by December 11th of 2020, and then grand opening June 9th of 2021. So, that's with respect to the term sheet itself, which is basically a framework to document some of the deal points. The next steps would include the preparation of a purchase and sale agreement, assuming the parties are able to reach agreement on all terms, that would be subject to approval by the City Council, and then opening of an escrow, a deposit to be made by KidStream based upon the provisions of the purchase and sale agreement. There would be a preliminary title report obtained that would be reviewed by KidStream to see if there's any title issues, and then that would, that agreement would then be put into escrow, and then, and once escrow closes, the transaction, there would be a deed executed by the city in favor of KidStream. There would be some restrictions with respect to the operations of the former library, it would be restricted to a children's museum, and I should also mention that there is a right to repurchase the property if, for whatever reason, KidStream is not able to complete the transaction, or if, after the transaction's been completed, if they would choose to sell the property, the city would have the opportunity to purchase the property from KidStream. So the other document that's in front of you, we can go to the next slide, I'll wait till that stabilizes. So, this is the rental agreement that's in your packet. The rental agreement is one that would allow KidStream to rent certain portions of the library that they would have access to during the time period that's outlined in that schedule that I was referencing earlier. It includes the lecture room, sometimes called the community room, the patio area to the west of the, or left if you will, of the lecture room, and then certain surrounding portions of the lecture room, and they would also have access to the restrooms. In addition to that, KidStream is proposing to do certain improvements to the area that they would be renting, and that is identified on page 2 of the rental agreement, under improvements, it would be that tenant at their own expense may make improvements, they must submit to the city a written description of all the proposed improvements, and that they would not make any improvements until they've been approved by the city. My understanding is those improvements would primarily include things such as painting and perhaps some carpeting, things of that nature. So, the item proposed, the two items proposed for your action tonight would be the term sheet and the proposed rental agreement. The fiscal impact of that, of the term sheet and the rental agreement are described in your agenda report. The KidStream would be paying rent to the city, we've verified that this is market rent with Kevin McAtee, his letter outlining that is Exhibit 2 to the rental agreement, and the additional fiscal impact would be, assuming that the sale is completed, that the, there would be a payment to the city of some $900,000 prior to close the escrow. So, that's it in a nutshell, I'm glad to answer any questions, and I do know that we have a representative from KidStream in the audience, in case you have any questions.
Are there any questions for the city attorney? Mr. Kildie.
Yeah, I just want to touch the bases here, Brian. They do have the zoning for this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Will there be a traffic study done at some point when this, and if this keeps going forward?
Well, I might defer to Mr. Vaca about all the issues with regards to what environmental review would be done, but it's my understanding is yes, there would have to be a review of what parking would be required and what the impacts of the project would be.
That's correct. At some point, actual children's museum would require a conditional use permit, which would be subject to an initial study and environmental analysis under SEQA.
Okay, will that at some point be agendized on the City Council agenda?
Yes, if progress is made towards that effort, and they file an application for a conditional use permit, it would be reviewed by the planning commission, and then obviously it's subject to the City Council calling for an order of review if that was the desire of the council.
But it's not automatic?
But it's not automatic.
No, but that will be an opportunity for the public to, to.
Participate, yes, yes, the public would be invited to participate at a public hearing if they desire.
Okay.
Are there other questions? Mrs. McDonald.
I have one other question, I forgot to, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is there any regulations regarding the earthquake construction issues on this building? Is there any other?
Let me phrase that better, is there anything that the building will need to do as far as enhancement of the code?
That's to be determined.
That's to be determined, that will be determined at some point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. McDonald.
Yes, I'm going to talk more about in this interim time when we're renting, or to them, or they're renting it from us. So, they're going to be rented certain areas, and they won't have any access to the other areas that people.
They potentially could have access upon request to the city, I think Mr. Petropolis might be more familiar than I am with what kind of process would have to be followed in order for them to have access to the balance of the building.
But it wouldn't be open for use whenever they wanted, it would be through.
That's my understanding, but again, perhaps Mr. Petropolis could clarify.
Generally what occurs, Mrs. McDonald, is that they contact us and ask for access, and Mr. Jordan's board provides that.
Opens it up for them, I understand they'd want to look at it and see it and show their investors, I'm sure. From a safety standpoint, we've got it now at least in a condition where it's safe, there's no other items that we need to do before we do indeed rent it out?
We are not aware of anything that would need to be done.
And I realize it's as is, so they're not expecting, expecting an old library, they're set there for a while. The outside of the property will still be the city's, and the outside of the building will still be our responsibility?
Will still maintain that, yes.
The one thing I'd like to request, the building, I don't know if we can get cleaned up a little on the outsides, and it's going to be at least two years, I believe, before we see any kind of construction, is that what I'm gathering by the dates? Is that true, Mr. City?
Well, the schedule is Exhibit B to the term sheet, the building and design and construction is the third bolded category, and it looks like they're expecting to award to the, the contract to the contractor in April of 2020.
Oh, it's opening in three years, okay, so it would be just about two years that there would be in this rental stage then?
Yeah, and then the, the construction would take place, looks like would be completed by December of 2020.
So that is a couple of years that that will be, and I'm just used as a piece, you know, as a rental unit, or large unit, and I know that washing off buildings is, I don't know if we can still do that now, but I'm just wondering if, you know, if we can look at, you know, kind of.
We'll certainly stay on top of that, and if it needs to be power washed or something.
It needs something to spruce it up a little bit, particularly if they're going to be showing it to people from outside the community, and we want it to look good, besides all of us who drive by it all the time. I think that was my main one, I just wanted to make sure that all the safety issues had been addressed, because it has been sitting there for a while, we don't have a family of raccoons living in it or anything like that.
It's only been vacant for what?
Couple years.
A year or two?
Been a while since the church has been out.
I think it's been closer to three, but I would have to check on that.
Really? Been a little while. Do you all see the picture of the raccoon that was climbing up that big 20 story building?
Yes, in Canada.
So you never know what a raccoon's going to do, not to get off on raccoons.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Kildie.
Yes, do we have any updates on their fundraising?
I think we want to ask their representative maybe?
Okay.
Instead of staff, or? Come on up. Just pull the microphone right up to you and.
Hello. Hello, I'm Merrill Chase from KidStream. You want an update on fundraising?
Yes, if you would, please.
Yeah, we've, we've been very active, we've engaged a fundraising consultant, it's David Baker, who is the same consultant that did our fundraising feasibility study, the charitable giving assessment, and he's, he's been terrific, he developed a lot of relationships during his interview sessions, and we've laid all the groundwork. One thing that I found in the assessment period is that donors and corporate supporters and the community all wanted to know that we could secure the building, that that would be key to moving forward, because before that, it's just a really neat idea. So, now that we're on track, if all goes well, to securing the building, then that will launch the more formal stage of fundraising. We have secured a number of grants, we have foundations that have contributed to us, we have a number of donors and corporate supporters that we are currently engaged with, there are three sections that we've already gotten the naming rights reserved, so it's going pretty well.
Any other questions? Mr. Morgan.
You know, you're coming into the tough part of the year where they put off their donations till the beginning of next year, the major foundations, and a lot of them wait, and they do it like the beginning of the year until a certain point, and it's done for the year, you run into that?
Well, to be, we're on a learning curve like this, but what we have noticed is that there's a wide range of opportunities, there are foundations that entertain things year round, there are those who have a certain schedule, a lot of them have different tax, what is it, the tax years start in a different month, so, the one thing that set us, two things that set us back a little bit, one of course, the Thomas fire, we were ready to hit the ground running the beginning of December, and, you know, it's, we have no complaints because we were blessed here in Camarillo, but it did slow us down a little bit, and also, you know, just all, all the steps that needed to be taken to get to this point, you know, it takes a while to get the foundation laid, but we're where we need to be.
Any other questions? Okay, we have no more questions of Merrill. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, or I'll ask it as a question, so I don't get in trouble. How long has it been now that since you started and really verbalized the idea?
In a more public manner, about a year and a half.
So that's not bad then, you've done very well.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, my husband was born and raised in this county, he was born in Oxnard and raised in Ojai, Chase Brothers Dairy, so, you know, a name that's been around for a while, and the other night, he mentioned to me, I've lived here all my life, and right now you know more people in the county than I do, and it's necessary, we need to, we need the support not only of Camarillo, but the entire region, so we've done outreach everywhere, we've reached more than 12,000 families, and being able to secure the rental space, the community room, we'll be able to reach, you know, three times that in the next year or so.
Wonderful, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, questions of staff, Mr. Trembley.
Just a question on the, question on the term sheet, on big page 4, under the recitals, Recital H, as in Harry, I understand the CUP is required, and it says the city will be responsible for compliance with SEQA, so that will all be city-initiated and completed, correct, Mr. Vaca? At the city's cost?
No, the SEQA document would not be completed at the city's cost, but we process that. So the applicant would bear the cost for the conditional use permit and SEQA review.
Okay, so that's the intention of H.
I could add to that, the, yes, that is the intent, Mr. Vaca's correct, as the standard is when a developer or purchaser of city property intends to initiate a project in regards to that property, that they would need to comply with SEQA, and that is something that would be at their expense, and there would be more detail as to that responsibility included in the purchase and sale agreement.
Okay, that's fine, and then to follow up on Mr. Kildie's question with regard to traffic and parking, and I know there are particular parking provisions in the term sheet, and I won't go into those, but can you walk me through how typically an outreach would be done at the time the SEQA process would unfold, particularly with regard to any surrounding areas like the neighborhood on East, on Eston Street?
Well, the conditional use permit would require a public hearing, we don't anticipate necessarily an EIR, however, we don't know until we do an initial study, so we don't know what level of public outreach would be included for the SEQA until we're closer to analyzing a product description and application, but definitely at a minimum, the conditional use permit requires a public hearing before the planning commission, which requires notification of all property owners within 600 feet, and a sign on the property, and posting in the newspaper, and posting on the city's website, advertising the public hearing 10 days in advance.
Okay, that's, that's it for my questions.
Mr. Morgan.
It was brought up by someone that we needed to notify all the neighbors about what's going on there, and I think we did, did we not notify the people around there that that's what we're expecting to do? Not yet?
I don't think there's been any public outreach to date.
Okay.
Well, I could add to that, that I believe there was a study session last year during the seventh game of the World Series, that was on November, November 1st of 2017, so that was a public meeting, and it was on the city's, city's agenda.
But the neighbors specifically haven't been notified and?
Well, if they follow the agendas, which are, you know.
They were all watching the World Series.
Well, they may have been.
No, I think you were asking if we had notified people.
People within a 600-foot radius that we've been talking about it.
But not yet.
Because we are looking at a project, doing this project, and maybe we need some input just in case, I don't think they're going to worry about that, and they've got baseball sitting next door, and every place is covered during baseball season.
It used to be a library.
But you said that when the time came, they will be notified, right?
Yes, if there's a conditional use permit application and a public hearing scheduled, we'll definitely go through our noticing requirements.
When the conditional use permit, okay, good, good.
Okay, any other questions? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us on this issue? Okay, what are the wishes of council?
I would. authorize the city manager to execute, execute, boy, I'm having a tough tonight, that's a good one, wasn't it? Execute the term sheet and rental agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Mr. Kildie.
Can I just make a quick comment? Would you please let your husband know that I grew up drinking a lot of milk from Chase Brothers Dairy?
The chocolate milk was really good.
I'm not going to comment on your husband or milk, or his dairy, I just want to say that I think that those of you who have been organizing this and leading the effort have done a tremendous job, you've really gone a long way in a short time, so you've done a good job. Yes.
I really want to echo what the mayor has said, I think this is an appropriate incremental step to move forward on, I really applaud KidStream for all the work that it's done. We need more activities for young families in Camarillo and in the, and in our region, I mean, that's the bottom line, and I think this is a wonderful project, which hopefully comes to fruition, that could supply that, so I want to give great compliments to you, Ms. Chase, and to all the folks at KidStream for all the work you've done so far.
Mrs. McDonald.
I will echo all of this, since I first heard about it, I've been so excited, I can't wait for it to open the doors, I can't think of a better use of an old library than taking that library and turning it into a new place of learning for kids, it just kind of gives you the chills, it's just so exciting.
Just kind of shows you sometimes it pays to wait till the right use comes along.
And we knew it would, and those who criticize us sometimes, yeah, those who wait, the rich, I get my sayings mixed up, but anyway, the riches will be wonderful for this community, you've done a great job, I'm so glad we've taken this step, and we're here to help you continue on the way, and look forward to the day of the cut the ribbon and open those doors.
Mr. Morgan.
I remember seeing in the newspaper, closing in Oxnard, you know, I hate to take credit for it, it's not, my wife, this one said, we ought to get them here, give them a call, and so I did, invited you to come over and look at the building, and I'm so glad you guys didn't go somewhere else right away.
Mr. Kildie.
Just quickly, again, echo what everybody said, and I know you're not nearly completed yet, but you've come a long way, and I look forward to, you know, following the progress, congratulations to you for this, going this far.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Now we're going to go back to page 6 of the agenda to finance.
She's the one that called me back.
Well, let's say, item 6.
Finance.
Finance.
5A?
Yeah. 5A. Yep, there it is.
Oh, 5, not 6, okay, well, I was right on finance, PRS rate stabilization plan, investment policy.
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, this item is a proposed policy for the Pension Rate Stabilization Program Trust Investment Policy. Excuse me, so, in an effort to combat or to address rising pension costs, City Council directed staff to implement a pension rate stabilization plan, I'll use the acronym PRSP moving forward, but to implement that trust, and to do that implementation, we're going to take it in two parts, so tonight is the investment policy for the trust, and then we'll be coming back at the next meeting to get into the actual formation of the trust and authorization to enter into the agreement and to talk about the initial funding. So right now, I'm going to focus on just the investment policy, and if there's questions on getting more detail into how the trust works, I can get into that as well. So, basically, the PRSP trust is a tool for putting money into, and right now, the City Council, in looking at the future and the rising pension costs, had committed $5 million of general fund money, general fund balance for that purpose. Now, the difference between keeping that money in the general fund and putting it into a trust, as being proposed, is that the trust is a little bit, is a lot more flexible, it, once it goes into the trust, there are a lot more investments that can be used, and it will achieve a higher rate of return, can achieve a higher rate of return. So that's one of the benefits of the trust, the other one is that when we're talking about the PRS actuarial liability that PRS calculates every year, and the amount of money that the city has put into the PRS system, there's a difference, that's called the unfunded actuarial liability, or UAL, and that's the piece that a lot of folks focus on, so what is that difference between the money we have in PRS and the estimated liability of our pension costs? So, by keeping the $5 million in the city's general fund, we're limited by government code to what we can invest in, by putting it into the trust, that opens it up to more investment options and a possible higher investment yield, but what it also does is it sets forth a plan for funding our UAL, and that is something that can be presented in the city's annual financial report, or the CAFR. So both of those things, I think, are seen as positives and looked upon favorably by credit rating agencies, so those are basically the, sums up the positives. The trust is very similar to what we've done with our other post-employment benefits program, trust is very similar to what we've done with our other post-employment benefits program, or OPEB. That's another liability that we created a trust in 2009. And the trust needs to have a separate investment policy established, and that's what we're looking at here tonight. And the trust would be handled by a third-party administrator. And the policy is then what the administrator will take and allows them to invest the funds. So some of the highlights for the investment policy are, we looked at this, reviewed it with policy committee in February and in April, and we reviewed it with city council in a study session in April. And we discussed the designation of an asset allocation strategy. That's what the financial consultant will use to invest the funds. And we selected the moderate strategy. That's the same strategy that we use for our OPEB program. It's the middle-of-the-road strategy. There are two that are more aggressive and two that are more conservative. So this one is, falls right in the middle. We talked about inside the policy, there are different types of reporting. There are monthly reports, quarterly reports, and semi-annual reports. And it also provides an annual policy review by both the policy committee and the city council to see if there's anything that needs to be changed in the policy. The policy also includes a funding mechanism. You know, we're currently, when I talked about the UAL, we're currently 70% funded, meaning our assets are about 70% of our liability. And that's about an average for all of the CALPERS member agencies. What the policy includes is a goal to become fully funded in 20 years. And we had talked with an actuarial firm of our own that, excuse me, that projected out, if we were to put that $5 million into the trust at the beginning, we would be able to achieve the fully funded status within 20 years. Now, there are a lot of different variables that come into play when PERS does their actuarial calculations every year. But using the current assumptions, we will reach that goal in 20 years. The disbursement section is where we talk about how much more money we may want to put into the trust. And the way the policy reads is that that will be discussed during the budget planning process. And it can be determined when we have new actuarial numbers, whether or not we still feel we can meet that 20-year goal. Again, the initial contribution of $5 million is what was proposed, and we'll be coming back at the next meeting to get that authorization. So the next steps are tonight, the action is to adopt the PRSP trust investment policy. And then at the next meeting will be the formation of the trust to approve an agreement for the, I'm sorry, that should be PRSP trust services, not OPEB. And then authorization to make the initial contribution and then approve additional appropriation for the contribution. So that sums up the investment policy. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Just one.
Mr. Morgan.
Or maybe. The OPEB trust, which is a trust like this would be, what's it earning approximately?
I believe in the last, I don't recall in the last year, but the five-year has been, well, let me say it this way. The moderate strategy is designed to achieve a 6.3% yield. That's what their benchmark is, or their goal. Over the five-year period, we had a 6.7, 7.6% earnings. And since inception, is about eight years, it's been about a little over 8%.
So a little over 8% for a year?
No, that's, that's overall, over the course of eight years. So it kind of evens out.
Per year, actually, to see how it compares with banks' curiosity, what the modern, moderate level is compared to what you're talking about moderate.
Per year, it's designed, the target is 6.3% annually.
Per year. Okay, 6.3. Good.
Any other questions? Mr. Tremblay?
She's calling you. I'll go after you.
So I, first of all, on the staff report, at the bottom of page one, the fourth paragraph, it, and I'll quote, "The city may, funds that the city may use, or the options that the city may use to pre-fund its expected pension contributions to CALPERS over the next 20 years with some combination of, number one, a pension rate stabilization program, a PRSP trust, and, number two, accelerated contributions to CALPERS." And we've talked about, first of all, I support the idea of a Section 115 trust, conceptually. We also, though, in the first, say, we talked about the potential for accelerating contributions to CALPERS. But I wanted to just explore that with, with you for, for a few minutes. And I've had a discussion with, with Ms. Rocha about, for which I really appreciate her time. I think, right now, we have an unfunded actuarial liability of about $34 million, right?
Correct.
Okay. So that unfunded actuarial liability is actually, or is in fact, a moving target, correct? It can be changed from year to year by PERS, right?
Correct.
So what I was struggling with, frankly, was, okay, we're going to establish a Section 115 trust. Why don't we, at the same time, try to pay down some of that $34 million UAL? So let me take a hypothetical. Let's say we were to commit, and I'm not advocating this, but I want to get this out for question purpose. Let's say we were to put $5 million in a Section 115 irrevocable trust, the trusts we're talking about here. And then we were to take $4 million of uncommitted reserves at the same time, concurrently, and pay that, pay that UAL down to 30 million, right? Is it true, though, that PERS could come along in 2019, and in fact, after we paid $4 million, expecting that money to, expecting that level to come down, PERS could actually come back and raise that UAL back up, let's say, to 32 million? Is that, am I understanding that accurately?
That is a possibility, yes.
So what, I really don't like the debt part, but I even dislike more PERS and the moving target part. And what really bothered me about this, just doing the Section 115, is, well, why aren't we paying, why aren't we concurrently taking some of our money and paying, some of our uncommitted general fund reserves and paying it down? And I get all the fact that, you know, we, we're going, we have some projects that we are thinking about, that we're going to need to use some of the uncommitted reserves for, and so on. But isn't true, this is not like a mortgage. Let's say you have a fixed-rate mortgage, and you have a principal amount, and you're paying that down on an accelerated basis, and you know your principal's going down. But in this case, with PERS, your principal debt could actually be going back up, right?
Correct.
Is that a correct way to understand it?
That is, that is a correct way to paint the picture.
Okay, so separate and apart from, separate and apart from the, the loss of opportunity, where you can't use the money, the $4 million in this hypothetical for unforeseen emergencies or for a senior senator or for some, you know, for, for something else, the fact is that, that this UAL could be a, could be a, the level of 34 million could be a target. It could change from year to year. And PERS, in fact, could come back next year and say, ah, we're, we're not at 20 years anymore. We're at 25. And by the way, we're dropping our discount rate, the amount of money we earn on our investments, from seven. Councilmember Morgan, down to 6.3.
Yeah, a lot less than that. But go ahead.
Right. Those are all correct assumptions, accurate assumptions, that could happen. But one of the things that is the benefit of the trust is that it gives us the flexibility. So we wrote into the policy that we could distribute more monies, or place more monies into the trust, is one thing. Another thing is to take some of those monies out of the trust and send them up to PERS, in any dollar amount. And that is the purpose of what we worded in the policy, was to have those discussions during the, the budget planning process. Because at that time, throughout the years, we will have annual updates to
Right.
both CALPERS actuarial valuations, and also our own consultants that do the actuarial valuations for our trust, that tell us how much money we have in the trust, how much we would need to place into the trust to maintain that 20-year goal. And that way, we have the year-to-year decisions that could be made to keep us on track.
Once we see the annual actuarial analysis.
Correct.
Right? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mrs. McDonald?
In the, in talking about PERS and their ups and downs, it hasn't been that many years ago we were super-funded. So it shows what happens, yeah. So it, it would be nice if we got to that point again. My question was, the $5 million, you say the $5 million will get us on the 20-year goal. If that, if that's all we did was put it in and leave it alone, we'd get there in 20 years.
And, correct. That is assuming no other, nothing else changes. PERS doesn't change their earnings rate. They don't change their mortality rates.
That's true.
They don't change any of their other assumptions that go into their actuarial valuation. And that's all we can do at this point with the, the information we have, is project out with what we know right now.
So, but that's just putting $5 million alone in and not touching it. So if we were to add to that, we actually should be able to bring that 20-year goal down more quickly and become, you know, get up to 80% or 90% funded as quickly as we can, if we wanted to.
Yes.
But once we put the money in the trust, it can only be used for purposes of the retirement system. We can use it to pay our annual costs, but you can't take it back out and put it back in the general fund.
Correct.
So it's kind of locked up in there for the future.
Right. The term Mr. Tremblay referred to, irrevocable trust.
It is. But we can use it to make our, our payment. If we came on hard times, there would be that money sitting there that could make your, your annual payment to PERS out of the trust.
Correct.
And this policy is, is just about the same policy as we have for the other trust, correct?
Yes.
We use the same template. Those were my questions.
Mr. Tremblay?
And I was just going to add, Ms. McDonald, that, you know, part of this is really sort of a, almost using a Ouija board in a way, because you really don't know what the, well, I don't mean to be so flip, but, but, but you really don't know what the return on investment is going to be. And we've had a good, I think, good return on investment with the other trust, but you just don't know what it's going to be. And you don't know what, and the thing is, I, I don't trust PERS, as far as I can throw them, and, which is not very far. And we don't know what they're going to do from a discount rate standpoint.
And this at least puts it in a trust where our advisors and we have a little bit more control over.
Where we have control, and that was, sorry, leaning, but, yeah, where we have control on it since, since it's a Section 115 trust.
And if you think they're going to get any kind of close to the investment they're projecting at PERS, we'd be out of this if they got that kind of, that kind of return up there.
What are the wishes of the council?
Your honor, I'll make the motion that we adopt the proposed Pension Rate Stabilization Program Trust Investment Policy.
Second. There's a motion in a second? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item 5B, Reserve Level Policy 3.05.
Yes, good evening, mayor, members of the city council. The adding before you tonight is the revisions to the Reserve Level Policy 3.05. The Reserve Level Policy was adopted on May 1992. It was amended in 2001 and 2007. Staff has reviewed at council direction the current policy levels, evaluated other agency policies, and researched best practices, again, as directed by city council, in the, in the past few months. Reserve level best practices, the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOWA, recommends at a minimum that general purpose governments, regardless of size, maintain unrestricted budgetary fund balance in their general fund of no less than two months of regular general fund operating revenues or regular general fund operating expenditures. How, there really is no standard, per se. This is just the GFOWA best practice. But many agencies have different levels of reserves based on the agency's size, the agency needs. So it's not really one-size-fits-all. Staff did meet with the policy committee in February and in April. We reviewed the status of existing reserve level balances. Most funds currently exceed the reserve requirements. Additionally, recommended revisions were tailored to the fund type and best practices. Additionally, city council discussed policy changes at the April 25th and May 9th study sessions. And based on those committee meetings and study sessions, staff is recommending that the general fund reserve level be maintained at 50% of operating expenditures and transfers out with no recommended changes. For special revenue funds, the current reserve, reserve level is 50%. And staff is recommending and the reserve level revised to 20%. Again, the committee also recommended this level. For debt service fund, the reserve levels are currently set by bond covenants, and there is no recommended change to this reserve level. Internal service funds, we have several. We recommend revising the policy to remove the Human Resources Fund designation, since that no longer is tracked as a separate fund, but is now a division of the general fund. There is no recommended changes for the Risk Management Fund reserve levels. Information Systems, there are no recommended changes. The Vehicle and Equipment Fund, we're recommending that the reserve level of 130% of the accumulated depreciation be changed to 120% accumulated depreciation on historical replacement costs. For the Internal Service Fund for City Facilities, the reserve level is 150% of the reserve study for capital replacement. And the recommendation is to revise that to 100% of the reserve study capital replacement. And, and this is primarily due to the fact that our reserve study analysis is only a couple of years old. So the numbers are pretty recent, and 100% would be more than adequate. For the Water Utility Fund, we are recommending revising the policy currently stated at 50% of operating expenses and transfers out to, to several categories. At the last water and wastewater rate study performed by consultants, we had them look at best practices in the area of these enterprise funds and make recommendations related to reserve levels. The recommendation resulted in a different approach, not just looking at operating budget, but looking at capital, rate stabilization, and restricted emergencies. So the reserve level policy would be adjusted to account for that. 25% of ONM instead of 50%, a capital replacement based on annual depreciation of replacement costs, a rate stabilization category of 5% of commodity sales, and then a category for restricted emergencies of 1% of asset replacement costs. Similar to that for the Sanitary District Operating Fund, again, we are looking at revising the 50% of the operating expenses and transfers out to categories for operations, capital, debt service, and the restricted emergency category as well. We are looking at adding a recommendation to the reserve level policy for the Solid Waste Fund, of 5% of the operating budget. This fund doesn't include capital, so we don't find the need to maintain a higher level in this fund, but just merely a percent for extraordinary items or things that might come up and where a reserve level might be prudent. For the Capital Improvement Fund, there are no recommended changes for this category as well. We do set aside funds for each of the five-year program at 100% to 80, 60, 40, and 20%. So those funds are accumulated to be able to provide for projects as those projects come forward. There is, so there's no recommended changes to these levels. However, there is added clarification language for the use of discretionary funds. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Just one, your honor.
Mr. Morgan.
Under the sanitary, you took, you reduced that from 50% to 25%. What was that, what was the reasoning on that?
The, the actual amount of the reserve isn't being decreased. It's just the categories that were, let me find that slide for you. So it's really, the components of the reserve level are, are being adjusted. So the, for operations, the consultant recommended three months of operating costs, which is 25%. But adding a reserve component for capital, adding a reserve component for rate stabilization, and adding a reserve level for restricted emergencies. So in effect, the reserve amount So in effect, the reserve amount doesn't really go down, it's really a little more tailored to the-
You scattered it a little bit.
It's tailored to that activity. It's an enterprise fund with different activity, and it's really looking at those various components to make sure that funds are set aside for those different activities.
The part about the emergency things, I appreciate that, because that takes it out of that category into that emergency set aside.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. McDonald.
Following up on that one, though, when you get down to calculating the number, each one of those equals a percentage and it equals a number, so my guess is you're probably, you might even be higher than 50% at some given time, depending upon what those categories are.
Right. I think when we did our last analysis, it was slightly higher than what it was. Not, not double, not 50% higher, but slightly higher than what it was.
Mine has to do, and I guess it would have to do with this one too, but it was solid waste that caught my attention, because we are adding that, I believe, we didn't have that in there before. But it's the rate payers from which we would have to generate the reserve when we didn't have it before, so we're going to have to accumulate some money.
Again, based on our most recent analysis, the funds are available for the set aside, it's just now a slightly larger number. The fund balance in total is adequate to set aside this reserve, and then any excess fund balance, which is what we're looking at, some excess fund balance after the next budget cycle, would be transferred to the Capital Projects Fund.
Okay. So the rate payer won't see any difference because of our reserve policy?
Not based on the most recent analysis, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tremblay?
Comments on, when the time comes for comments.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, comments?
Well, first of all, this is, what we're talking about now represents a lot of work by staff, and so I want to thank staff for it. This has been a, there have been a lot of discussions about this, both at the policy committee and at the council level. And I think it's fair to say that we had a very robust discussion in the study session about the appropriate level of reserves for the general fund. And this city is blessed with very high general fund reserves. What, refresh my recollection, Ms. Rocha, it's about six-
50%?
No. Total amount of general fund reserves, committed and uncommitted, are?
I would say about 42, no, 46 million?
A little north of that, right. And so, you know, you flip it over and you begin to ask yourself, does the city have too much in the way of, I mean, we're blessed, but does the city have too much in general fund reserves? And these are dollars that are all from taxpayers, and they're all public funds. Typically, if I understand it correctly, other cities have somewhere between, other cities are envious of Camarillo, stipulate to that. But number two, other cities typically have reserves levels about 25% to 40% as opposed to 50%, right? Is that a fair characterization?
That's fair.
But I don't think there's sufficient support on the council right now to decrease that percent level of reserve. But that said, and I understand that, but that said, I think, is it fair to say that the commitments of the general fund reserve dollars do go back to the city council every year, go back to our council, as part of the GASP 54 process, right?
Correct, and that's done typically with the budget, so you'll see that report come forward in two weeks.
Okay. So we'll look forward to more discussion in the future. But thanks to staff, because this is an awful lot of work that you've done.
May I say something?
Mr. Morgan.
Now, I have to look at what he said in other respects. Yeah, some have 25%, and that's why they can't afford to do their streets over in Ventura. That's why they can't do their streets in Oxnard. If you go to Santa Paula and Fillmore, they're even worse. Now, we are in a position that we can continue doing our maintenance, because we have sufficient funds, and we've earned that through the years, because we were down to nothing. Now we've earned it, and we're paying it back to the people, they love what they see. And if we cut ours down to 25, and we have emergency like the three million we put up there on the hill, we don't have as much backup funds and other things to do that. If a great tornado or earthquake hit here, and we needed that, we could have it, others won't.
And I understand that, I'm not advocating for 25%, Mr. Morgan. When I'm advocating, wait a minute, be fair, I'm advocating for a continuing review of this. Fact is, right now, we have $10 million in committed reserves for natural disasters, or we will be, right? And that's prudent, and I salute the council for what's been done in the past. And we're, we really are truly blessed by what the council has done and what the city has done, and it's been hard work. My only question is, at what point do you get to a tipping point where it's too much in what you're holding in terms of taxpayer funds? And I'm only asking the question just to set it up as a question. I'm not advocating less amount. I think it's something, though, that deserves continuing discussion as we go forward, that's all. That's why I said it in the form of a comment.
I've had a chance to talk to people about, you know, reducing that thing, being requested by, I didn't say who, but requested, our reserves being reduced. They were very cautious also, because we're in such good shape.
I just want to say one thing. It's really good to say we're saving this money because it's taxpayer money, which sounds like we levy the taxes. Our largest source of income, if I remember from Saturday, is sales tax. And we get nine sixteenths of every penny that people pay in sales tax, and that's Camarillo people, people who shop at the outlet center, who's only come through once from some foreign country, and a lot of people like that. The next one is property tax. And the property tax, we have nothing to do with the amount people pay. It's based on what the people voted on Prop 13, state law. So it isn't like we go out and say, we're going to collect this much money, we're going to collect this much money, we're going to collect this much money, and then we're going to hold it, which kind of is the way it sounds when you say, we're holding taxpayer money, I'm sorry.
Well, we, whoa.
We're holding money that we collect from various sources, and a lot of that has a place we want it to go.
That's, oh, absolutely.
And we have, we have some, we do have a lot that we've put away, we started out calling it for a rainy day, but I just don't want anybody listening out there to get the impression that we levy the amount of any taxes they're paying.
No, you're absolutely right, and the two facts. Number one, we, just about equivalent in terms of the second highest, or the, or actually, it's sales taxes and ad valorem property taxes are about equivalent in terms of-
Almost.
Of their contribution into the general fund, and those ad valorem property taxes are from local taxpayers. The second is, we do have, and we're blessed to have, over, I think, 11, currently about $11 million in uncommitted reserves. So, you know-
There's a story behind that, too, if you'd like a story.
And I know there's a story behind it, I'm just advocating continuing discussion, that's all. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Can you tell, I'll ask the question first and then make a comment. Of our, what we consider our reserve, our undesignated funds, or whatever you want to call it, and you said it was the $94 million, right? Of that, how much is attributed to the reserve policy?
The reserve policy of 50% is 50% of expenditures and transfers, so if your budget's 40 million, it's $20 million.
So what we're talking about tonight is represented by $20 million, not $94 million. So we got to keep that into context, too.
Forty, yeah, just to clarify, your committed funds are about 27 million, so in total, you're, I said 46, it's really about 47 million of reserves and commitments.
So about half of it, then, just to round it off, is the reserve policy set aside, and then the other are funds that we just haven't used yet.
But you've specified or committed to certain activities or categories.
And one, and I think it's very important that people understand that we do not have a special tax on the books. Oxnard passed a special tax, they're collecting special tax, and this isn't rate payer money, this is, as you said, this is money that someone else said, you will collect it and we get our little share of it, because even property taxes, we don't get a big share of it.
Let's get property tracks straight, and sometimes staff confuses property tax, too. If you look at all the property tax we get, we get a certain amount from the sanitary district, because the sanitary district was formed before the city was formed, and that amount was levied before Prop 13. And whatever you got before Prop 13 is what you got after. The cities who didn't collect a property tax before Prop 13 because of AB 8 were not allowed to start collecting one unless there was 66% plus one of the people voted for it, and Camarillo never had that vote. So back in about 1988 or 89, maybe 90, I was at a Contract Cities meeting, and I heard a discussion of how Joe Gonzalez had worked with the Contract Cities Administrator, Sam Olivito, and I forget the name of the assembly member, and they had put a trailer onto a trial court funding bill, so that the cities in Los Angeles County would get 10% of the property tax, the no property tax cities in Los Angeles County. And I went up afterwards and said, wait a minute, why didn't you include Ventura County? And Ventura, they said, well, nobody in Ventura County asked, and I said, well, this is the first I ever heard of it. So I came back and I got the city manager, Bill Little, eight o'clock in the morning, I was in his office, and I said, Bill, call Joe Gonzalez, call Sam Olivito, and get us on that list. So they told him they wouldn't add Ventura County unless all the cities in Ventura County wanted to be on it. So that included Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks, Camarillo has no property tax cities, and Moore Park, who was already getting 7.5% of the property tax, because that's what they negotiated when they incorporated after Prop 13. So in the end, the city gets 4.5%, not including what the Sand District or any other district gets, but the city's share is 4.5%. I think it's Oxnard that gets 14%, Santa Paula 16%, the other cities, Ventura 12%, if I remember right, Port Winneby another percent. We are the lowest cities as far as property tax in the state at 4.5%, and those are the cities of Simi, Camarillo, and More, and Thousand Oaks in Ventura County. The rest of the state, it's much higher. So we're not getting as much of the property tax as anybody else in the state's getting, and I'm sorry to be so long on this, but people need to know this.
Yeah, we always refer to the fact that we're a low property city, and you just gave a really good explanation of how we got there.
Can we add one more thing to that? Sales tax, compare ours to other cities and how much they're charging, and you'll see that people, why do they come to Camarillo? Because maybe 2% less sales tax.
Yeah.
And so we're not getting a lot of sales tax likes a lot of the other cities, but we're doing well and keeping it good for our own public.
Can I make two more points that were on my list before? But I do appreciate your explanation of property taxes, that's something we sometimes don't explain well, we just say we're low property tax, and no one knows what it means. Also, I think that, well, one, we've got some money there, sitting there waiting for something to happen. We have a large sum of money that came back out of, from the redevelopment agency that we would love to have out there working, but the-
You've got to have the right projects.
We also have to have the right governor, or the right state, because he's the one that closed all that down. So it's not like we, you know, there's reasons behind some of this, that maybe you don't know when you're, somebody is out there's looking, then just looks at that bottom line and says, oh my gosh. And the other thing, though, two more things. One, if there was something that we aren't doing in this city, I mean, we're not going to gift the money off to just whatever, you have to use it for a purpose. So if indeed there's something that we're not doing, then that's what we should be bringing to our attention and saying, okay, you've got the funds, now you need to do it, but it needs to be done for the purposes for which that money is meant. But we keep our streets up, we went through the recession, we cut back a little bit on that, and we're now catching up. Those are the kind of things that we've been able to do, and we rode out the recession without really having to cut back much, because we were able to, we knew we had that reserve. And my one last point on the general fund. To me, it's, the general fund is what we have, that no matter what else happens out there, it's always there to back us up. So when we decrease the reserves in some of these other funds, we always know that that general fund is there if we had to loan money out, if we had to do something, if, let's say the sanitation plant flooded and we didn't have enough money, we always know we've got some money there to help those other funds out as well. So to me, it's just that, what's the right word, it's that safety net as well as being there for a purpose. So I just would hate to see us have the day that we would fall below that, because it happened to us. And the other side of it is, if we had to go out and now raise the money in order to do it, but we've got it, so I don't want to see us lose it. It'd be one thing if we're having to skip and to get to that level, but we're doing pretty well with it, so that's kind of my reason for wanting to stay.
Charlotte, one more thing before I leave. In talking to other cities, and Mr. Tully, I talked to him the other day, in Ventura, what, two, four years ago, just started doing this, a maintenance plan of their streets. They did do it when they have to. That's Oxnard, the same way, I talked to Perello over there, they have no seven-year plan. This way, it costs you less. We had this, Charlotte, you were there, when we had the gentleman came in and made a presentation about how much we save by maintaining it, instead of just, you know-
Well, we've had a plan for years.
Well, we have since like, well, we got it spelled to us from a study group, and now we've got this, a lot of cities don't, and we have to have the money to buy it, to pay for it.
I think we've discussed this today.
You've opened a, yeah, well, not a can of worms, but passion. Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
Your honor, I move to adopt the revised reserve level policy 3.05.
Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Die for lack of a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we've skipped around a lot, but I believe we're down to comments, oral communications, and then we will go back to the study session, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So Mr. City Manager? Mr. City Attorney?
I have no items.
Council members, let's start with Mr. Morgan.
First, I had two Eagle Scout awards I went to, one was at St. Columbus Church, and that young man was sharp, I got to tell you.
They're all sharp.
Well, no, this one here is going to Berkeley or one of the, he's got some high goals, and the gentleman was sharp. The Cameron Ranch House, Charlotte and I went to, and of course, we didn't say anything according to somebody's letter, but that's not true, we talk a lot. But we're liaisons, we're not voting part of it, and so that sometimes, yeah. Anyway, had Eagle Scout at Trinity Presbyterian Church, again, a young man that's usually is full of words for everyone else when the Eagle Scouts come up, because I've been to many where he's there, and he does the talking. What did you guys do that was funny or something? He'll get up and tell you two or three stories. Well, he couldn't even talk that night, he couldn't say a word hardly, his speech was short. Ribbon cutting, excuse me, budget session, we all went to that. Vietnam Ad Hoc Committee, Charlotte and I attended that, and we're getting down to the end, and we saw a picture, a diagram of the new, what would you call it?
Memorial.
Memorial plaques are going to be, it's beautiful, guys, it's going to look really good. And of course, we had a ceremony at the cemetery, which, this is the first time I've ever seen doves make about six different turns and then go, because normally they'll go one or two and are gone. This time, they just kept staying there.
Coming back and coming back.
And you had two or three like trainees that come here and couldn't turn. Anyway, it's kind of funny, but it was good. That was a great ceremony, by the way. Lastly, saving lives at Habad. I missed you over there, but it was a short, easy one, and we're still going through some programs that we're going to try to introduce to you, like lock boxes for medicines and things like that, with grants and things of that nature. That's it.
Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you. Meetings, VCTC, we met last week and adopted a budget, the budget, not as healthy as we'd like, but moving very slowly on the 101 freeway, and it's going to be years, but at least we've got the first step.
It's not the Camarillo crush.
Yeah. I don't know, some days it's Camarillo, some days it's Oxnard, some days it's halfway in between. Anyway, it's moving, at least we're doing something. And of course, we had our budget session, staff did a great job, you all did a very good job, moved through it, it was very clear, concise, and we're very, as we just mentioned, very fortunate to have a healthy budget and able to take care of the city. A couple Eagles, the Eagle Scouts, too, I always enjoy going to Eagle Scouts, and it's just amazing how every group just a little bit different in their, you know, what they think is funny, and their program, and, you know, you hear the kids talk, they, this group talked more about how they played video games and scaling mountains, but that was what was important.
that was what was important to them, so that's what counts. And I just want to—on your Vietnam War commemorative—what are we going to call it, a plaque?
Memorial.
A memorial? I was watching at the concert last weekend, and there were people all over that place, the memorial—well, the memorial is there, but on the benches, on this, on that. So, and watching them, you've got to make it so it's sturdy and climbable and jumpable.
We're talking—we're talking about all that.
Yeah, it's got to be tough, because they were over every single inch of the memorial that's out there. So, that was just my report on that. I specifically went out to look for you. And I've just talked enough in the last 10 to 15 minutes, so that'll be it.
Mr. Gilding?
Let's see. I did attend two meetings, a VRSD meeting and the Budget Session workshop. I also did attend an Eagle Scout Award at Trinity Presbyterian Church and another, you know, young man that's very, very accomplished. And it's—a boy, I think all of us can attest, if these are the young folks and individuals that are coming up through the ranks, our country's going to be in really good shape. Also, we do have graduations of our high schools. I think Camarillo and Real Mesa, I believe, are Thursday and Friday. And my daughter graduated Friday, and I just have to say—I want to just do a plug-in for her middle school cape. She has four classmates in her cape eighth-grade school that are valedictorians at very—various high schools throughout the county. So, it's a pretty amazing statistic there, too. And all the schools are great in this city, and we're very blessed to have that. Also, if it's okay with the council, we lost a very important person in our city, a lady by the name of Kathy Van Slike. And many of us know Kathy. Kathy was very instrumental in many things, but not the least of which she started the Women in History, and she was extremely active in the Camarillo Academic Olympics. So, with the permission of the—all the council members and the mayor, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in her honor. She's going to be sorely missed and just an outstanding volunteer in our community, and that's what makes Camarillo such a great place to live. I had a lot of respect for Kathy and what she did after, you know, in her later years, if you will. She didn't just sit around. She was very, very active and really made a difference.
Mr. Tremblay?
A number of things that I had the privilege of attending. On May 24, ribbon cutting for Timia's Title, which is over Village at the Park. On May 25, we had an Economic Development Committee meeting. On May 28, we had the Canal Mountain Memorial Day Remembrance. And just a shout-out to Canal Mountain, they do a terrific job each and every year. They do a wonderful job. On May 31, a ribbon cutting, another ribbon cutting where I was substituting for the mayor on One West Bank. On June 7, I had a Clean Power Alliance meeting, the JPA meeting in Los Angeles. On June 8, I had the privilege of doing a ride-along with Deputy Robert Medina from Camarillo Police Department, from our police department. And, you know, it's especially—I'm making this comment tonight is especially nice, because we had folks from DART, Citizen Patrol, the Explorers, and the Kiwanis Officer of the Year, who unfortunately couldn't be with us. But we have such a high level of community support here, and I want you to know that —and a shout-out to Deputy Medina. I—let's see, I was along on this ride-along for about 10 hours, and I will tell you that his interactions with everyone with whom he came into contact were highly professional. He brings great credit to the Sheriff's Department. We are lucky to have him, lucky to have the caliber of police services that we have, and I feel really lucky that we have him protecting our community. So, I want Commander Murray to know how much I appreciated him. We had a Budget Study Session on June 9, and then I had a meeting yesterday of EDCVC, the Executive Committee. And then finally, for someone who is almost an Eagle Scout, but not quite, there is a Life Scout named Aiden Compton, who is a member of Troop 262, who is doing trainings on sidewalk CPR. And you remember, many of us are probably training on traditional-type CPR. Sidewalk CPR, he did at the library a couple—I think about a week and a half ago. And sidewalk CPR is easy to learn. It takes about five minutes, and it will help save someone's life. He is going to have, I think, a chance—he's going to have some time at the Fiesta.
We're going to have a booth set up for him, and I talked to him at the Eagle Scout Award personally, and his parents, and he'll be working on that for two days.
Great. And I think through Council Member Morgan, that's going to happen. I think through Council Member McDonald, through Mrs. McDonald, he will also have a booth or a space at our National Night Out combined with a concert at the park in early August. I can't remember—is August 3? Something like that.
Somewhere.
Something like that.
It's in August.
Whatever National Night Out is.
So, if anybody is listening, please, 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 go get trained on sidewalk CPR, because it can save a life, and I really commend Aiden for going forward with this project. It's a wonderful Eagle Scout project.
And it's a lot easier than it used to be. All you've got to do—
It's a lot easier. People shouldn't feel—
Be able to sing "Stayin' Alive." That's what you go to.
That's right. To that disco beat. Right. Thank you.
We should have had him at Disco Night.
Okay. I'd like to thank all of you for pitching in. I was gone for six days, and you did all the work, so thank you. You attended all those ceremonies and ribbon cuttings and all that stuff that was during that time, and I appreciate it very much. While I was here, I attended the reception for Captain Jeffrey Chisholm, who's taking over as the commanding officer as Navy Base Ventura County. And I want to take just a second to explain what that means. A lot of people think he's in charge of everything out there. If you think of what used to be Point Magoo and what used to be the CB base, now combined as Navy Base Ventura County, on that property, you have 90 Navy activities. Each one of them has its own commanding officer. In addition to that, there's a Marine unit, an Army unit, and now there's Coast Guard out there. And everybody's got their commanding officers. So, think of this as a big shopping center, and he's the manager of the shopping center. So, he owns the property, so to speak. He's the person in charge of—taking care of all the facilities for all of the tenant activities. And I know it's confusing when we start asking the city clerk for a change-of-command ceremony here and one there, and there's one on the 4th and one on the 14th, and that's what—why there are so many. Anyway, I also attended the Memorial Day Services, this has been said. I attended the RDP 21 meeting where Mr. Gene Fisher talked about our trip back to DC and all the various offices we visited. I attended the Fox Canyon GMA Fiscal Committee meeting. I attended the Ranch Foundation Board Meeting and the Vietnam Veterans Committee Meeting. And—oh, no, that's all I attended. I have some other things that I think I'll give to the city clerk, and I don't know how—if anybody's interested, Navy Base Ventura County did a study, and these are brochures on the report of the economic impacts of the base on the county. And I found them interesting. There's also an article here from the LA Times of the public utilities are battling in the power shift on the community choice things, and it's an interesting article. The public utilities are not giving up easily.
Nope, not at all.
And finally, we received word today from the Gonzalvai, as they call themselves, our Sacramento lobbyists, that the gut and amend process has started, and one bill that was obviously going nowhere was gutted to change the wording so that everybody would have to accept people who had been through the fire training program, as long as they had worked to get their high school degree while they were in the program, unless they had one previously, they would be able to be EMTs. So, they—are there's probably going to be a couple more of those. We need to watch them. We need to be on them, and we might want to take a position on some of these, because they certainly affect—I mean, they are part of what it was we were fighting against. And so, anyway, I just thought I'd make sure you knew that. So, that's all I have. I guess that's all everybody else has. We will go back to our study session on policies, and then, at the end, we will adjourn in the memory of Kathy Van Slike.